All right, we're going to call to order the November 26 Planning Commission meeting. Can we have a roll call?
Chair Simpson?
Here.
Vice Chair Coffer is absent. Commissioner Clifford is absent. Commissioner Griffin?
Here.
Commissioner Cook?
Here.
Commissioner Carey is absent and Commissioner Walker?
Here.
All right, thank you, yes.
I should be here.
Okay. Agenda review. We will be moving Agenda Item 7A up to our first order of business. It is not a public comment. It is just our work session for our meeting with the council next week, I believe. December 4th. So, and are there any other comments regarding the agenda itself? Okay. Hearing none. We will go into discussion of Planning Commission goals and accomplishments for the annual boards and commission meeting with the council. Does anybody bring their goals and accomplishments? Let's start with the accomplishments. What's, we need three of them.
We need three of them.
Yeah. We have a goal. We have a goal and an accomplishment.
You can list as many as you like.
Accomplishments, I had the Town Center master plan as a plan. And through that same process, accomplishment number two is the new interactive citizen engagement process that we did where we did small group work sessions. And I think that was a huge accomplishment.
Yeah, that goes with mine. I had, just basically, I think we've had a lot more community involvement. And I think that's, while that's also, still continues to be a goal for me as well, but I think it's a big accomplishment. How many more people are joining us in our meetings and how many more people are letting us know their opinions and issues? So I think that what you've said there were, including that in the interactive engagement of them was a good way to say it. How about you? Sound good to you?
It sounds good. I still feel I'm new enough that...
You have no goals.
...refer to all of your group.
Accomplishments. We're talking accomplishments.
We're covering accomplishments.
I would like to add or put on the list as a potential one, two, or three, which we haven't really done anything with it yet, but I'm really psyched about the concept of special zoning districts. We talked about, you know, the, like a neighborhood district. When we were doing the Town Center Plan, we talked about, you know, the areas across, you know, north and west of 99, how that might become a special district and that we would end up adopting, you know, zoning ordinances that would mirror somewhat what we're doing on this side, so it wouldn't be left out. It's not part of the town center, but it's not going to, you know, suffer from not having the same kind of zoning and planning and continuity. I like that idea. I like that.
Okay. So that would be another accomplishment, that identifying neighborhood districts in that plan provides us as a community to look forward.
I felt like, I felt like, I felt like we were getting the push, you know, from our friends in Portland to identify a town center. And in that process, I felt like, oh, we have these cool neighborhoods and cool areas and...
We don't want to forget about and...
Yeah, exactly. So, yeah.
Identify them in some way. I also had, just basically, the, having a full commission, having the tenure on the commission that we have, I think we've finally got a group of people that have been here a while, and I think that that's an accomplishment that we couldn't say in previous years necessarily.
I would add that, you know, one of the, I would think an accomplishment that the commission made this year was actually getting the community center through its process. I certainly agree with you that I think through the Town Center process, we have now identified the need, and it could be a goal for the future, to actually somewhat come up with a revised citizen participation program that would be tailored to the Planning Commission and ultimately, implementation of the Town Center Plan might be one, starting to work on those documents. We're, as you know, going through the Transportation System Plan process update right now, so that'll be part of it. And I mean, I see this all as a, there's an end goal in my mind of updating our comprehensive plan, because our comprehensive plan is over, I think it's 20 years old now. And that was when we had a population of 3,000. And now we clearly have a population of 18,265, as of the latest numbers. And I'm not sure that our community is not divided, and it might be a good idea or a good time to start looking or putting a program into place to update that and say, let's take a snapshot of our community today and look at what we want it to be over the next planning horizon. So certainly, there's a lot of steps involved with realizing a comprehensive plan. Looking at housing analysis, Goal 9 and economic analysis. But if it's a goal that you can establish as a goal as both a commission and a decision-making body, then we can start working towards putting a work program together. And I'm not going to say that it's a one-year thing, and certainly, we have to convince council that that's the way that we should be going. But I would think that, you know, in light of this past year's events, I think that, you know, that could be certainly something that we'd want to consider and think about.
I have one other accomplishment, which I thought was part of what happened in this last year, was during the Town Center Plan, we made a good connection with the council through work sessions, and we were able to communicate with them, find out what their, where they were headed, so we weren't going down the wrong way. And I think that's always been on my objective, to have good communications with them, but I think we did a really good job this past year in communicating back and forth with the council so that we stayed on task to where they wanted our projects to end up.
Yep, I'd agree. We've had that issue in the past where that wasn't always the case.
Yeah. So I think we've done a much better communication jobs and projects were more in line with where the council was heading with the project. So, that's also one of my goals, is to maintain that communication. So if we want to look at goals, those are, many of what you just said are, you know, the comprehensive plan update, the TSP. Those are minor accomplishments and still goals on our work agenda.
So if we're listing goals, that we should list, you know, maybe sitting down and thinking about putting down in writing what the citizen involvement plan is, what the infrastructure of that is. Something else that I thought that I wanted to add as a potential goal, if we're kind of moving into goal area, is a lot of times this year, I heard the phrase, "Well, you should have told us," from citizens. And I always responded, "Well, you could have come to a few of our meetings and heard about the fact that there's this huge parcel of land, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." So I don't know what the answer is, but I thought it might be, you know, when something of that size, of that scope, of that nature comes across, you know, our collective desks, if there's some way, not to raise a flag of warning, but to raise a flag of, hey, there's this big chunk of land that's coming into the city boundaries and it's, this is the zoning, which could mean a lot of things, we should probably...
Should probably pay attention.
Pay attention and have a discussion about it so that, so that the public doesn't feel surprised or ambushed, because that was certainly no one's, at least from our side of the dais, 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 whatever the saying is called.
Desk.
Desk. Our side of the bar stool here thing. So that's just kind of a, I don't know what that is, if it's a goal or if it's kind of a sentiment.
I'm sorry. I think that could certainly work into a citizen involvement plan. And I envision it, I think that when Joe first came into, as the city manager, there was discussion about how we can better use some of the social networking tools to reach out to the public. And I think that part of the reason that we haven't done that is because there's not really any clear policy or direction on how best to do that without getting ourselves into some kind of trouble.
Right.
And I think that, you know, it's worth a look at, you know, as part of this citizen involvement plan update, to look at ways that we can incorporate those social networking tools into the toolbox to make it a better, more fulfilling, I think, process.
So those emails that he sends out on Fridays, which is sometimes funny to come out on Sunday afternoon, you know, the Friday update on Sunday.
He has to use them to the just weekly update.
Which is totally, no, which is totally, I laugh every time I get it. I think it's great. But I read the whole thing, because I find it, I find it very interesting. And I don't know, I don't know who gets that, or if anybody can get that. Anybody who wants to sign up can get it. Because it seems like, you know, maybe something, you know, because there's links in there that you can jump off, you know, to the various city pages. He's very thorough about all of that. That might be one branch, one branch off the tree of communication that we can use to let people know, because there's a planning section there always, it seems like. That's a thought.
Certainly.
Is there newsletter sign up? Hell, that we've spoken about that.
We do. We have an interested parties list that we keep. And I think there's even an email update that every time the website's updated, people get notice of it. I would say that it's archaic, and it actually shows you everything that was done back,
Already, yeah.
several months ago. So it'd be nice if there's a way that we could figure out to just give the most recent information, you know, like, and I think, again, that's part of the discussion we have to have with our IT department and coming together on a policy of social networking.
I think, I think when we have, you know, interactions, even like public meetings or special sessions or open houses, we should always have a list there that says, hey, you know, if you'd like to be put on the list to have this email, give us your email. You're here, you're standing right here, write your email down now, and then you'll get the next announcements. So every time we meet, we should have that available so people can sign up for it.
We haven't done that in the past, but it was certainly, definitely something that we would do.
I have one more question. Years ago, we used to have a work program that I don't know how it got presented to council and approved, or how we would add agenda items to it. Is that still something maintained at the staff level, that we would know what other tasks are on our program?
What's coming up?
I think that's part of the hope that what we've come out with, your meeting with the council in December, is coming together and coming up with a work plan on, you know, what is it that the Planning Commission wants staff to accomplish? Does the council agree with that work program? And is there other things that the council would rather see on there? And so, coming up with a work program for both Planning and the Planning Commission.
I was thinking more specifically, like when we were doing it before, there were budgetary constraints when it involved things like code cleanup and staff, yeah, staff time specifically, but the code cleanup and...
So you kind of knew what was coming up on the agenda, so you'd know. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
What was going to be, we were going to have in front of us in two months or something like that?
And we did that with the code cleanup.
Right, but for budgeting purposes, and when they get ready to go into budget season, does the planning department have on their agenda, or on the Planning Commission agenda, the special districts and the neighborhoods and the other things that we just discussed as goals? How do we, how do we communicate that this is, you know, our goal is to get these special districts and get these other things done?
You've got to fit them in somewhere.
How do we figure out how much staff time that's going to take, and do we put it on the budget someplace?
Right. And I think that's what the process is. So when you present, these are our preferred, you know, these are the goals and things that we'd like to accomplish.
Okay.
And the city council says, let's do that. Then we can take a serious look at, okay, we want to know how much this costs, what is it, what does it entail? There's going to have to be some back and forth as to defining what exactly it is that you want to come out of that process. Special neighborhood district, that makes sense, but does that mean that you're going to classify the entire city into different neighborhoods? Are you going to divide it up into a quadrant? How is it that you're going to delineate those lines of special neighborhoods? And then, is there an end goal to defining those? Like, you know how Washington County does their CPO meetings? Is there a way, you know, ultimately, as part of that citizen involvement plan, to meet individually? If we divide it up into quadrants, then you could go out into the community. And I remember earlier this year, there was talk about going out and having, participating in picnics around in the different neighborhoods. So same kind of concept, I think, that you're talking about, but I think it has to be defined. If it's set as a goal, then we can start defining it and understanding what it is that you want to do, and then we can assign time and budget to it.
Okay. Do we need to have two or three things outlined very clearly right now, so that we can talk about next week, or is this, we've given you enough?
I think you've given me enough, but I have written down for, what are two or three major goals for 2014? Maintain communication with council, the citizen involvement plan, and then is there...
Well...
The comprehensive plan, right?
The comprehensive plan update. That's a biggie. It's a biggie one. We understand that, and that's a couple, you know, 18-month process.
Yeah, when you do that, you said we didn't, haven't done it for how long, 20 years? Isn't it meant to be like a 20-year plan, a 10-year plan?
Right.
It's supposed to be reviewed and updated every 10 years to be in compliance with all the metro goals and the state planning goals.
And we haven't looked at it.
And so you evaluate the existing conditions. It's like a big, like what we did with the Town Center, but comprehensive.
Yeah. And there's also the continued code cleanup. I know there's a couple of small issues that were, you know, still hanging out that, and I don't know how to classify that as, code cleanup is very generic. I know we had a grid, so I don't know if we can tackle how much.
There should be an annual code cleanup brought forth by staff on, like, things that we look at and how we've applied it and say, hey, this isn't working, and discuss it with you. Certainly, there's other code-related issues that come out from the private side, which you'll see in the couple, next couple of months, where when Andy came and talked about the setbacks, things like that. But over and above that, one of the code cleanup issues that we never got to, and we had talked about getting to it through the Town Center Plan, is cleaning up the Old Town standards.
Yeah.
And the processes in Old Town. I think that's still a valid goal, you know, that we would want to have on our work program.
And that wouldn't be part of the comprehensive plan?
It could be.
That's what I was thinking.
But I mean, the comprehensive plan process is not going to be like a one-year-long process.
Okay.
Probably a two- to three-year-long process, because there's a lot of studies that go into that.
Okay.
It might not be, it might be two years, but, you know, there's those things that you have to put into place at the beginning. How are we going to involve the citizens? So that comprehensive plan is a huge, a big work program. By going through and establishing a citizen involvement plan, that can be applied to updates of the Old Town design standards and processes.
Right. And the Old Town part, I think, should be more of a fast track so that we can be proactive now that we're coming to a point in our economy where things are starting to blossom. We don't want to be behind the curve. We should be getting our Old Town properties in an ability to fast-track and build really quickly instead of in the process that we have right now.
I think it's important to have a vision before, you're correct, before we get into the middle of, you know, the hot, new hot economy. And we are definitely going to be an area that's going to continue to grow. And I just want to say, to the, with Commissioner Griffin's point about the citizen involvement particularly, to update that and to have a plan and to make people feel supported within the community, they can approach, because I heard that as well, you know, and so I think it's important to make sure that we, make sure the community knows we want to hear their voices and that it's not just a matter of, okay, we're checking the box, that it's something that we will take input.
So I've heard this, and I'll take it back and try and craft it into an email and put it out to you folks probably tomorrow. We also, I mean, we have a grant for the Sherwood West Planning Process, too.
Oh, Sherwood West.
So there's a whole host of things that we could be doing. And the Sherwood West is everything west of Elbert and north of Edie that was brought into our urban reserves.
You said it was, okay, it's north of Edie, west of Elbert?
West of Elbert.
South.
Oh, south. Between there and like 99 all the way down.
What's the order we're going?
North of Edie, too.
Okay.
And what that is, is that's, in a simple, just defining it in the most simplest terms, is there are several hundreds of acres out there that we came to a conclusion with Metro that said, over the next 50 years, these are areas that the city would look to expand into if the city was to expand. And then there's rural reserves that say, over the next 50 years, these areas won't be touched at all or considered as part of the urban reserve, I mean, as part of coming into the urban growth boundary. So the Sherwood West Concept Plan was a program that has been funded through Metro. We got a grant, and basically, what it does would look at, what are the challenges, opportunities, and constraints to those areas developing? How can we involve those stakeholders? How can we phase utilities? How can we phase the, bringing those into the UGB? And I think that part of the comprehensive plan update is going to entail, you know, how fast does this community want to grow? Because you have the Brookman Road area that's been in now since 2002, and twice it's gone down.
Which, I would ask the question, if it's been put down twice, is there something wrong in the master plan that makes people uncomfortable, that they don't want to have that brought in as it sits right now? Should, is it possible to revisit that master plan as it sits and say, you know, it's been in 10 years and it hasn't been, you know, brought into the city? Is there something in that that should be revisited and...
It's certainly a valid question.
2002, will we...
Right. So there's something, you know, what's in the master plan? And are we still, I mean, 10 years, that's a long time for that to be sitting out there, and no one's comfortable bringing it in. Maybe we need to revisit what the master plan means, and, you know, is it still the goals and objectives of the community as we are now?
Absolutely. And that would be another, something that you would have to put onto a work program.
Well, there we go. Add it to, and we used to have a short-term, midterm, long-term, and that was, you know, short-term, we knew TSPs on the radar, we have to do it now. Midterm was likely to occur within the year, or at least started the next calendar year. And long-term was our wish list. If all the magical beans came together and we got money, we could do this project.
Right. And we can certainly set it up that way. I know that they asked for the two or three major goals, and we can certainly say, these are our two or three major goals for 2014, but here's our projected and forecasted goals over the long term. So I could certainly set it up in short...
I would like to have an ongoing work program, because the council has a really good projected agenda on that weekly, that weekly update has their projected meetings for a year. So any work program items that I would see the council doing, you see on their scheduled meetings several months out, so. Okay. All right. Does anybody else have anything? All right, then we will move on to our regularly scheduled agenda, which is a consented agenda, which is none. Council liaison, Mayor Middleton, you're up.
I don't really have anything but next week, the meeting we're having with all the different boards and commissions. And one thing that I think that you really need to pat yourself on the back was, was like the Town Center Plan, the council was impressed the way you had handled the whole thing, and we had no discussion. We were just, we just passed it right on, and I think that there's a lot of trust between us and the Planning Commission. So I think everything's working very smoothly between the two.
Thank you very much. All right. We're going to move on to staff announcements.
So I guess I stand corrected that the board meet, the dinner with the council is going to be December 3. And if you have an RSVP, please do.
So there's nothing on the 4th, right?
Right.
I was just trying to figure out what was on the 4th.
So I apologize for that. I said the 4th, because I was thinking Tuesday was the 4th.
Yes. Sylvia wants a RSVP.
Yeah, so if you have an RSVP and you want to go there, I think it's a very valuable opportunity for you to talk to the council in a very informal...
That's not the meeting for this, though?
Yes.
Does it mean to discuss this? Or is it, where's the dinner?
Also...
I think it's here, is it not?
It's right here, and, yeah. And then we have the Transportation System Plan, open house. Bob, can you speak to, have we got a date?
Yeah. The next TAC and CAC committee meetings are December 11. The TAC is going to be held in the afternoon, and the CAC starts at 6:00 at night, December 11.
So TAC is Technical Advisory Committee?
Technical Advisory Committee, and the Citizen Advisory Committee is at night at 6:00, after, after everybody gets off work and has the ability to get here. We're having an open house the next evening to the general public to bring them up to date with everything that has gone on prior to that, which are the two meetings we've had. One, the first one was for the existing conditions portion of the report. And then the second meeting is going to cover the opportunities, needs, requirements, and policies that, that the TAC and CAC meetings are going to cover and make recommendations on. That will be the following evening, December 12. And that's going to be down at the Police Department.
And so an opportunity for citizens to make comment at that point?
Basically, yes.
Okay.
So that's what we're trying to do, is get, get their input at this point in time on that portion of the, on the previous two portions or three portions of the project that we're, we're looking at right now. And to show them where we're going with it and where, what the emphasis is from the committees.
And what time is that, on the 12th?
I think it starts at 6:00, but I can't, I'm trying to get that squared away, but I think it's at 6:00, from 6:00 to 8:00.
But it'll be posted on the website, too?
We're going to post it on the website. We're going to have flyers put around town, and we're also going to post it in the Tiger Times.
So it hasn't actually been determined the time yet? You're still trying to get...
It has. It's just...
You still don't know? You've forgotten? Aren't you sure? Got it?
I've got a lot of numbers running in my head, and I don't, I don't have it on my day timer yet, so.
Okay.
But it will be posted.
Thank you. Anything else? Staff?
That's it.
That's it for staff comments? Okay. We have community comments. These are for any items that are not already on the agenda, and if you would like to speak on something that's not already on the agenda, you go ahead and come up to the table, we'll have you fill out a blue card. I don't have any blue cards, so going once, going twice, no community comments. All right. We are going to move to new business, which is our public hearing. The first one is SP 1303, Sherwood Industrial Park Phase 2. And I will need to read this script. Okay. The public hearing on SP 1303 Sherwood Industrial Park Phase 2 is called to order. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as followed. Staff report will be 15 minutes, questions if any by the hearing body. We will open the public hearing for testimony. At that point, the applicant will have 30 minutes, and it will be split between the presentation and rebuttal after other testimony. Then we will take applicant, or persons in favor of the application who will have four minutes each. Persons opposed to the application will have four minutes each, and then rebuttal from the applicant with the remainder of their 30 minutes. At that time, we will close the public hearing. No other comments will be heard from the public or the applicant. The final comments by staff will be up to 15 minutes. Questions of staff, if any, by the commission, and then discussion by the commission. A decision may be made by the Planning Commission at the close of the hearing, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain. If the matter is continued to a date certain, this will be the only notice of that date you receive. If you wish to speak, please fill out one of the testimony forms, which are the blue ones on the back table, and submit it to the Planning Commission Secretary. The chair will recognize those persons wishing to speak, and any questions should be addressed through them. When you come forward, please state your name for the record and your address if you wish to be, receive any further communication regarding the hearing. In deciding whether to approve or deny the application, the commission must consider whether the application meets the relevant approval criteria found in the city's land use regulation. Those criteria are identified in the staff report and are available in the room this evening. The written and oral testimony must be directed toward these criteria or other criteria the person speaking believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise the issue, an issue with enough detail to enable the commission, the applicant, or the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the City Council or Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the commission to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. At this time, I would like to ask members of the commission to disclose any ex parte contact, bias, or conflicts of interest. And you need to indicate the nature and extent of your ex parte contact, conflict of interest or bias, and indicate whether you intend to participate in the, in the hearing tonight. And can the records show that Commissioner Carey has arrived for the hearing?
I visited the site.
All right. All right. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge any Planning Commissioner's member, members' ability to participate? All right. The Planning Department will now present the staff report.
Thank you. So the city received...
So the city received a site plan application, type 4, for two concrete industrial-sized buildings and associated parking at the southwest portion of the major site that's adjacent to Southwest Century Boulevard and Tuolton Sherwood Boulevard as well. You can see the vicinity map here shows the 92-acre site, and the subject parcel is about 9.45 acres in the southwestern corner of this map here. 52. Oh, I'm sorry, 52. So this is part of a multi-phase project that's, they received preliminary land use approval back in 2000. They also received a DSL permit for a wetland fill back in 2002, which is approximately 5.65. The site on the eastern boundary, Rock Creek goes through the property. They did some mass grading with a site plan approval in 2005. And then Phase 1 of the project was a site plan approval in 2008 for two industrial-sized buildings. This is considered Phase 2 of this project as a whole. So in looking at the original site plan that the applicant submitted, it's a 9.4-acre site. Building 3 is the large, is the larger building on the right side there, and it's approximately 72,000 square feet. The building to the left is Building 4, and it is approximately 35,000 square feet. There are some existing improvements already on Southwest Century Boulevard with some street trees, sidewalk, and also the completion of a full, full street improvement. The applicant proposes two driveways to access the site, as well as a landscape parking area of 172 parking spaces. It's anticipated that the traffic trips for the day will be 1,131 trips per day, with a cap mitigation amount, which is, which is recommended for $230. And Bob can speak a little bit to the capacity allocation program if you have questions or questions about the traffic or any, and Jason Waters is here from the engineering department, should you have questions about any of the improvements or recommended conditions concerning the infrastructure. So here is a Google view of the buildings 1 and 2. It's kind of what they look like, and you can see the associated improvements as well to the site as, as you approach Century, as you're on Century Boulevard, heading east. So one of, one of the main things with this project is the industrial design standards. These are some new standards that we developed a few years ago. And there are two different routes or options that applicants can go with respect to industrial design standards. We have six objective design standards that the applicant would agree that have not been been met by the applicant. They've requested a planning commission review of their building with the consideration of the seven criteria that you see on the right-hand side. So these are somewhat subjective criteria. You can take a look at the design and see if it meets the various criteria that you have on the right-hand side. With respect to the industrial design standards, those are pretty objective standards, and the 15% window glazing was one criteria that they did not meet. You can see the windows identified in the elevation there. And another criteria is two building materials. The applicant has the building composed of concrete, and the differentiation is the paint color for the building, not necessarily a building material. And the alternative, the planning commission could consider possibly that the windows would be considered another building material, but staff does not recommend that that be considered as a separate building material criteria for the reasons identified in the staff report. Also, another criteria that the applicant did not meet in this situation is the building, a maximum of 35 feet from the street, the building is set back with parking in the front, as well as a big driveway as well through, through the building as well, not meeting that standard. Parking in the rear and side, as you can see from the site plan, the parking is in the front of the building. However, loading is on the sides of the building, on the east and east side of each building, and the roof equipment is hidden from view. So with that, would, open it up to any questions that you might have from staff at this time?
So they had to have four of the six, right?
Four, oh, sorry.
Four of the six. And this is the first time this has come up for us, isn't it, since we redesigned these?
Brad indicated that it did come up with the Sentinel storage, for portions of Sentinel storage?
We looked at the industrial design standards, but they met the industrial design standards on those portions of building that are within 200 feet of Oregon Street. But they didn't ask for the planning commission review of the subjective criteria, because they were able to meet the objective criteria. So this is the first time that you will be holding a design review hearing specifically on the subjective criteria.
And they need to meet the seven criteria under the review.
Exactly. And these were, we set these criteria, these specific ones, right?
Correct. And I would state that it's the burden of the applicant to demonstrate that they've met that to you, obviously. But we do, if it's a decision that you make to agree with what they propose, then we have to support that with findings. And I would propose that if it comes to that point, that we would want the applicant to provide those findings.
Okay, so at this point, what has been submitted does not have the criteria of seven findings presented by the applicant.
Well, the applicant submitted their applicant's materials, as well as Exhibit G, I believe, where they identified their analysis for meeting the criteria of this review.
Right, right in here.
We're digging for G.
Yeah, what does G look like? Do you know what G looks like?
It doesn't have.
I didn't see the exhibit numbers on any of them.
They don't have, yeah.
What page is it on?
It's after the Clean Water Services.
Sorry?
It's after the Clean Water Services, so it's the very last thing before you go to item C.
It has McKenzie on the letterhead.
So it's page?
It's page 47 and 48.
Oh, okay.
It's a memo that was November 18th, 2000.
Okay. On the backside. It doesn't say Exhibit G on it, does it?
No.
So this is where they've, okay. I did read this, okay. If I recall correctly, when we really, when we set this up, we really wanted them to do four of the six, and this was just because, for the situations when we, so it'd give us an opportunity, and them an opportunity to come back to us to, if we could not anticipate something that was, that the intention of it was, these six things were, the intention was that four of the six, that's what we really wanted it to look like. But because we come across so many things that, or occasionally you come across something where we had not anticipated that that would come up, which is, I believe, why we had this, this more subjective set of criteria that we could count on. To allow something that was really meant, this is just really what we want, this looks great, but it doesn't quite fit, so we have them this way.
Right, and so, but I guess I'm confused, because what the applicant put in this memo is the answer to the six, not to the planning commission, not to the seven. So are they, and we can ask the applicant when he comes up. So this, that's my confusion, is this memo addresses the six that?
Why they didn't do that?
That don't meet the criteria, so we?
And then the staff report also addresses the 8B criteria.
Right.
From that as well.
Okay.
In the alternative, they were saying, they're, in the alternative, they're saying, we can meet 8A, that, the industrial design standards, that's, that memo, as well as meet, we can meet both, is what.
So they're willing to make, they're willing to do the industrial design standards if we require it, but they would prefer to do, they think they have come across good enough based on the other standard.
They think based on the design that's in front of you, that they have met the industrial design standard 8A. Is, that's what the memo and Exhibit?
8A or 8B?
But that's because they believe they comply with?
8B.
Right, not because?
Right. They may opt to have a design review hearing with us specifically, because they don't meet all, at least four of those. That's right.
I defer to them and?
Okay, so we will?
All right.
Get specific answers from them. And then my one question is regarding parking. And I saw that your calculation takes like the maximum number of spaces based on kind of an industrial look, rather than a warehousing look, because the warehousing has significantly less spaces. And I'm just wondering the methodology behind that.
So we don't know who the tenants will be.
Well, we don't know who the, yeah.
That's one thing. So I did a worst-case scenario using the industrial standards and not the warehousing standards, but then the warehousing standard was also, if it's over 50,000 square feet to apply the, the 0.3 for warehouse, so that's why I, I didn't venture to guess, so to speak, of what it was going to be.
Okay.
And so I just went with, they satisfy the minimum requirement.
So this, this is the protection to the community, that there will be adequate parking in this area?
It would only be less than this required.
That'd be correct.
171 was the actual requirement.
Okay. Any other questions before we ask for the applicant? All right, then, I don't have a card, so I will ask the applicant, I don't know who's the representative.
I did have a couple of corrections that I'd like to make.
Okay.
With respect to page 4 in the findings, 4 of my staff report, I would?
Page 4 of 31?
Page 4 of 30, yes. The, the last line, there's a the and an A, and I'd like to insert the word "time", at the time a use is proposed for the development.
Page?
Right, it's right above 16.31.030. The word "time" should be right after A.
At the time a use, okay.
And then on page 7, Bob provided a rough estimate to the applicant, estimating that it would be under $200, but it turned out that the cap mitigation cost was $230. So I'd ask that that condition, recommended condition be amended for 230. It's in that place, as well as on page 23.
Okay, so no more than $230?
No more than $230.
I'm not sure on what that is.
The marks off two of mine.
And then on page 20, after the applicant has had a chance to review the staff report, they indicated that the cul-de-sac had already, that, that had been removed, that temporary?
The thin?
The easement had already been satisfied.
Oh, the easement, okay.
So that, that condition is no longer necessary, and in reviewing that with Jason, we're in agreement that that condition could be removed from?
Which one was that? I'm sorry, I was trying to find your?
The second $200.
The second $200.
Probably doesn't matter.
Page 20?
Did you find it, Jean?
Nope, page 20.
Page 23 is the 200, the second $230.
Page 23 of 31, or page 23 of the whole thing?
Page 23 of 30, of the staff report.
I have 31.
So do I.
Yeah, ours says 31.
That's 31.
It's page 23 of 31.
Yeah.
Page 27.
Hopefully, that part is the same.
Or the actual page 27 of the thing. Okay. Gotcha.
And is that not in the?
It's in the findings, too. Isn't it?
It should be in the findings, the recommended conditions.
It should also be there.
Yeah, she said on page 7.
No, but on the final findings.
On the top of page 23, the recommended condition is to 230, but?
It's on page 30. It's, it's C3.
Okay.
Prior to approval of the public improvement plans, 3, pay a cap fee in lieu of not to exceed $230. That's the one I was looking for, the one in the actual recommendations.
Right.
Okay. And?
Okay, so back to the conditions. You had one more change that we missed.
I do have, I have another.
20, what was that, 23?
30.
One that applicant caught. It was on the condition 8A, that they, I have that they did meet the?
What page you on?
Yeah.
There's no 8A. Oh. That's like page nine or something.
In the findings?
It's page 9 of 31.
Mm-hmm.
The applicant, in the findings, it says the applicant does meet, so I said that, I should have said the applicant does not meet.
We can leave that one as is.
Right. And?
8A.
Where's the "not"?
I don't.
I don't see where the "not" is that we're talking about.
Yeah, put it under there.
So in the, in, so, in the six, it says, after six? On page 10, or I?
10 of 31?
10 of 31. After, there's the finding in bold, the applicant does, and then I'd ask to insert "not".
Got it.
Got it.
So?
But the applicant doesn't want the "not".
And? And then on page 20, the recommend, the last recommended condition before the cap, I'd ask that that be removed, the applicant has satisfied that condition.
The easement.
Prior to issuance of the sort of relinquished temporary cul-de-sac easement. They've already satisfied that condition.
And that's actually?
And then, that's Condition E4, found on page 29.
Got it. Our page 30.
And thanks for your patience.
Hello, I do not have blue cards, so I do not have your?
McKenzie.
Yeah, but I don't have their individual names and who, who? So if you can give your name and address for the record, please?
Mark Person, Address, 1515 Southeast Water, Suite 100.
That was a good question.
I'm a newer employee there, so I'm still getting that down.
Where do we use it?
That's in Portland, Oregon.
Portland, Oregon.
I'm Dale, Dale Poppy, with McKenzie at 1515 Southeast Water, Suite 100, in Portland, Oregon.
And Dale and I will be presenting this application on behalf of the applicant, Jack Steiger of Oregon Washington Sherwood LLC. And Jack is in, is in attendance tonight, as well as a few other people from our, our office. Bob Thompson, the principal with McKenzie, Bob Frentis Jr., civil engineer with McKenzie, in the event that there is any engineering questions that Dale and I can't answer, as well as Cyrus Beatles from our architectural office. I just want to thank the commission and, and city staff for being here tonight on this holiday-shortened week. I know things are a bit hectic in my household, and I'm guessing I'm not the only one preparing for the, for the big weekend. We understand we have 30 minutes, and now I understand what the clock is for up there, so we appreciate that. We want to keep this to about 15 minutes, I think, and have adequate time for rebuttal and questions. As, as Michelle lined out, we're proposing a site plan with two buildings on this Phase 2 site that's nine and a half acres in size. And we believe that the, you know, the site plan complies with the Sherwood Municipal Code and is allowed outright in light industrial district. We're not asking for any variances or departures from code as part of this development. All the adjacent land is either zoned light industrial or general industrial. We conducted a neighborhood meeting that was unattended by neighbors, and as far as I, as I understand, there hasn't been any public comment given to staff at this time. Michelle gave a great job. I don't want to belabor any of these points, but I do want to just give a little more context. It is, this is Phase 2 of, of the, of the larger development. It's located south of Century Drive, north of the Southern Pacific Railroad right-of-way, west of Rock Creek, and east of Langer Farms Parkway and Langer Farms P U V Phase 6. And the past approvals and histories that Michelle touched on, this is part of a larger three, excuse me, three-lot, 52-acre industrial park that was, started its permitting in 2000. three, excuse me, three lot, 52 acre industrial park that was started its permitting in 2000. And in 2002, the Division of State Lands and Sherwood approved work for wetlands in and around Rock Creek. But this portion of the development does not have any significant natural resources on it. And in 2005, the continuation of Century Drive was was permitted and constructed as well as a drainage system, so a storm system for the entire 52 acre site was designed and construction at that constructed at that time for for full build out. Phase one, which is to the east and northeast of this site, is is a two building 90,000 square foot total site plan that was approved in 2008 and constructed in 2010. And a part of the reason this has kind of taken some time is because of the recession and some slowing down of of moving forward. But we're we're happy to report that phase one is now completely leased out, and the applicant feels as though the time is right to proceed with phase two, that there's a demand for additional industrial space here in Sherwood. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Dale to talk more about the site details.
Thanks. And if I stand up and point at drawings, is that a problem or is that okay?
Yeah, it's great.
Well, do they not have microphones that we could use?
Okay. It is a two building scheme. We're talking about 107,000 square feet total of industrial space in in this proposal. I wanted to point out some features of the site. As far as the the landscape goes.
Can you hold for just one second? We'll see if they have a mobile microphone for you because. There's. Thank you for that.
Excellent, thank you. As far as the site goes, we've got the two buildings, total of 107,000 square feet. The site is includes a little over two acres of of landscape or almost 22%. Buildings are designed as speculative, multi-tenant industrial buildings. So at this time, there are no no tenants proposed until we get a little farther into construction, they'll not be working on leasing of that. But the the design that we've come up with incorporates a lot of flexibility in order to facilitate a wide variety of industrial tenants, anything from light manufacturing to to warehouses would be the the potential market for that. Building four is the or building three, rather, is the larger of the two building at 72,000 square feet. It's designed to accommodate between one and four tenants, so it has four four tenant entries until it's leased. You need to maintain the flexibility of of demising them. Building four at 35,000 would be between one and two tenants that that could occupy that space. Typical tenant bays or the the proposed market for this product is between 15 and 20,000 square foot leasing. Typical in that will be 10 to 15% office, so between, say, 1500 and 4,000 square foot of office with the residual of the the tenant lease space being the industrial portion of the the tenant space. The site is configured to work with the the existing grades, it slopes. I'm looking here at exhibit two that we we brought with us. It slopes high side to the west, low side to the east. And so we're parallel to the grades to cut the docks in and kind of work with the the grading to minimize the amount of earthwork and during construction. One of with the industrial use, circulation is is critical, obviously. We've got trucks and cars to access. As Michelle pointed out, we've got the we're proposing two new driveways. We also have a shared access off of the phase phase one project so that we've really got direct access to each of the the sides of the building. But we we also feel strongly that it's important to maintain circulation around the building, and that's why we want the driveway up front. The other portion of that is really accommodating the amount of parking. As you pointed out, we we're meeting the standards for the higher level of industrial use to make sure that we've got adequate parking. And the way the the truck court works, if we move the building over, we lose a lot of parking on the site. To mitigate that, we were really looking at the landscape and the softening of the building from the street. So we've got the the street trees along Century. We've got a 10-foot landscape buffer with with trees and shrubs planted that then go to the parking spaces and driveway. Then we have an additional six to eight feet of landscape adjacent to the building that would include trees and shrubs and ground cover. Again, the buffer, the the configuration of that landscape would help to to soften the presence along the street. Stormwater is to the the regional water quality to the north, so that's been addressed. We have a swale to the east here that drains down to the wetland below, and we've set up the site to really avoid that area and limit disturbance in that area to the planting of the trees so that we're not affecting that that feature. Trash enclosures, we do show trash enclosures for each building. They're pulled to the back so that they won't be visible from Century Drive. They will still be accessible to all the tenants, and we've configured it, we believe, so that the the trash provider won't have difficulties accessing that either. We are proposing some outdoor storage, those in in a couple of pockets on the site. It's a an important amenity for industrial tenants to have that option. We have pulled it back away from Century so that it it's screened by the buildings and the the landscape. I want to point out, there is a heritage oak tree on the site that we are staying away from and and avoiding that area again so that the limit disturbance. We've gone through at this point and calculated our our tree shading calculations, and I'm happy to report that we exceed the minimum. We also looked at the number of shrubs that are on the site, and we actually exceed that by a fair amount when you calculate that out. So we're our landscape standards exceed the the minimums significantly. As far as the building elevations, I'm going to look at exhibit three here that we brought today, which is kind of the similar elevations to what we proposed earlier or included in the original application. The buildings are tilt-up concrete. It's a it's a great material for industrial uses because of the durability of of that material, and it's able to, you know, look be maintainable and endure the the use that it's it's going to to need to endure. The the elevations will be softened similar to the existing buildings by using architectural reveals and a multicolor paint scheme. The paint colors and configuration of the elevations of these two buildings are not identical, but really are in the same vein in the first two buildings. The idea there is to foster a campus industrial type appearance so that it'll be obvious that this is a a campus. As far as the glazing goes, we've got a fairly large amount of glazing at the entries for each of the proposed or potential office entries. So we've got higher glass at those locations, and we've got some large ribbon windows that would be next to that where the the office component would be. We, as far as the flexibility of the space, we would design into the structure the ability to add windows if we get a tenant that has a high office area need. So we've got some some future glazing that could be cut into the panel at that point. In closing, we thank you for your consideration of this project, and we look forward, hopefully, to an approval. Our goal would be to be able to begin final permit documents and be able to submit for permit in January. It would allow us to pull a permit, say, in April so that hopefully good weather comes in May, and this project can be constructed over the summer and be substantially complete and ready for leasing in November. So we're here, and we'd love to answer your questions.
All right. Yes?
Well, just the question before, I wanted to point out the November 18th memo, and there was some confusion. For the initial application, we knew we weren't going to meet the industrial design standards outright, so we didn't even address those. We just went straight to the planning commission review, the the 8B in conversations with staff. We I added, you know, we added additional information to 8B, and I also took a stab at, excuse me, took a stab at addressing some of the industrial design standards, just showing how we were meeting the ones we were meeting and how we weren't meeting other ones. If that if that makes it clear as mind for you.
It does. So the memo, your your attempt was, and they'll stop the time now that I'm questioning you. That doesn't go against you.
Thank you.
So your memo is addressing 8A and showing that you don't meet it, and it goes on to say kind of generally why you think you've met it. They understand that we have to meet a criteria and then make findings. And what the staff was commenting to was that we would have to bullet point the findings to correspond with a planning commission review. So. And that's that's why we're asking how, you know, of the seven, we we're quasi judicial, so we could look at the seven criteria in front of us and say, do you meet these or not? In your memo, I would have seen those seven written down or.
Sure. It well, in the initial our initial submit, all the seven are addressed.
Okay.
Yes. And there was some additional 8B2, we had some additional documentation that we submitted in that memo. So that's really what the memo was is for, so the.
So in your first original application, you address the one through seven.
It's on the bottom of our page 10 of 31 and the top of our page 11 of 31.
In his this thing?
The applicant suggests that although the tenants are not known, kind of in that area.
Do you have it in here?
No, it's in the.
Where would it be in here?
It's in the narrative in there, yes.
In the narrative.
I'm sorry, it's tab.
It's on page seven. It begins on page seven of the applicant's materials. And before any bullet tabs of attachments.
Okay, are there any other questions before we call for?
I have a couple.
Okay.
I have a couple. What what exactly are those storage areas areas going to be used for? What what is something going to be parked out there? Are they for like pods or what are they? The ones west and south?
So the storage areas.
Um, yeah.
So storage areas are this location and this location.
Right.
And outdoor storage, again, not knowing what the tenants are, a lot of times they'll have trailers that they need to store for a short duration while they're getting loaded or unloaded or or, you know, I wouldn't see it as, you know, there's a wide variety of materials that might need to be stored outside for a duration that would be applicable to the manufacturing, if it's a light manufacturing. Maybe they have a a group of pallets of goods that that need to be outside for a short duration while they move it through their process. Or more more typically would be trailer storage.
Okay. And while you're there, you mentioned in your your information that in the design of the building, there would be recessed areas in the concrete that would provide, I think your words were interesting shadows. Can you point on the, are you talking about the where that dark color, the dark strips?
Yeah, so so the the face of the concrete, when they when they form the panel, they can actually take, it's engineered wood material and and cast over the top of it, so it's it's like a sculpture that way, and it would have a depression in the concrete which would give a shadow line. So that would be at the 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 paint lines we're we're painting inside of that that reveal there. We've also got a kind of pinstripe reveals that are crisscrossing the face of the building that just give it a nice crisp little line that would give you just a shadow line enough to to give some depth to the the elevation that way.
And then finally, you mentioned that that these are similar but not identical to the to the other phase.
Correct.
Are they different in color or how are they?
We we varied the the pattern on the face of the building slightly. We've the colors are similar. We've introduced, I believe, one more color that's slightly different.
Yeah, I see it now that I see the one on the screen. Thank you. That's all I have.
The first phase, building ones and one and two, would they have met those six guidelines for new industrial standards for windows and if they would have been implied when you had built those?
I I do not believe they would meet.
I don't think so either.
Criteria as written today.
Do you know what percentage you have on windows? I was looking for a number.
Well.
It says it just doesn't meet. It doesn't say if it's.
14 or?
14 or three. And I mean, it's not three, but, you know.
If. And I'm not sure that the code clearly defines. I'm assuming your your intent is on a square footage basis, not a linear footage basis.
Square footage on the front edge to the street. Correct.
Square footage to the street, building three is about 1.6%. And building four is 6.7%. Building three, the main elevation of the building really is to the the west here. So so the majority of the glass is along this face where and and the reason really is, just so you you're you're understanding, with the industrial tenant, you have two components. You've got an office and a warehouse or or the manufacturing area. And as I said, typically, that office is going to be maybe 1500 to 4,000 square feet. And because manufacturing and office are both best as rectangles, the the offices would be configured across the front, leaving a nice big rectangle in the back that is access to the dock doors and the grade access so that really that industrial activity is back here, and the office and visitors are all off the front of the building. So ultimately, we've got the majority of the glass here, and on this building, we've just got a little glass here where it would actually be at the office area. And and the one of the reasons that it's difficult to put glazing along that elevation is because of the use. You've got an industrial use, honestly, and and Jack can vouch for this, but it's not a matter of if they're going to hit it, it's a matter of when. And these buildings take abuse, and that's why they need to be durable. And having glass into the the back area would be somewhat of a risk that way from the abuse standpoint, but it also goes to what you see from the street. And if you're you're walking by, you're seeing into a warehouse or or some industrial activity, that may not be desirable from either the view of the person that is seeing it or from the security point of view of the business that wants to move into the the property.
Okay.
So that that kind of explains why we on the phase one, we see more glazing towards the street side. As I'm looking at these pictures up here, we see more more window frontage because of the orientation of the building on the property. Is that correct? Is that correct?
Well, the picture you're... The image you're looking at up on the screen is the first phase.
Right.
And with the topography and the configuration of the site, it was more conducive to having that frontage at the street. You still have, you know, you still don't have the 35-foot offset, we've got parking out front, and other considerations that don't meet your criteria. In this case, given the topography, the grades range, I want to say it's like 30 feet a drop, 24 feet a drop across the site, and so, it's really hard to orient a long building across that grade and the grading and fill that would be required for that. So, we really have to reorient the buildings in this case.
More questions on the application?
No, not questions, but...
Okay. Then, we will call, as any, we'll ask you back at the end after other citizens have an opportunity to testify. And how much time do they have left?
15.
Oh, there it is, 15 minutes, 13 seconds.
We'll keep the citizen comments on the stopwatch, on a stopwatch.
Do you have the one-minute sign?
I'll get it.
Okay. Does anyone, while he gets that, does anyone wish to speak in favor of the application? Okay. Then, I have one opponent, Lori Stevens. And if you could just wait a minute, they're going to get the timer out, so that, because we're on the stopwatch, they'll raise the blue card when you have one minute left, and then they'll raise the red card when your time is up, if you choose to use all of your time. We're not very, we're not going to beat you up or anything if you go over.
Is it off?
Yes, and if you just start with your name for the record.
Sure. Lori Stevens, 15630 Farmer Way, Sherwood. I put as an opponent, but I'm kind of an other opponent. I am glad to hear that the oak tree will stay, that was one of my sticking points. There are owls in that oak tree, and there have been for years, so that's a good thing. I'm concerned because there was a public notice supposedly mailed on November 6th. I'd like to find out who it was mailed to, and, I mean, I live within a couple thousand feet of that property, and I didn't get a notice, so. I also went around and was looking for signs, there are certainly none along Twelton Sherwood Road, which is one of the places I would anticipate seeing one, since it does intersect with Century. I found out about this by looking at the website, which, we have our own, as addressing your goals, the social media, as a result of the activities this year, we formed our own act, our action committee, and we monitor the website, and we have multiple social media actions, and we get notices out to each other, so that there will always be community members attending the planning meetings and the council meetings. So, we kind of address things as a whole. But we'd love to see more notices, so, we don't get this, how come you never told us, and well, you need to come to the meetings comment, so. Also, with regard to the 1131 trips per day, I want to see that proven, written somewhere, because that's a big discrepancy from the trips per day that was done by the Walmart study, which is the same road area. So, I'm not really sure how that number was arrived at, I don't know if you've already done a study, or plan to do another study. The list of things that could be done, could not be done, and had conditional uses, one was that it could be a lab, but not medical or dental, that it could be treatment of products. Well, if, most treatment of products requires some sort of chemical process, yet it was specifically prohibited to use any kind of chemicals, such as toxins, acids, paints, dyes, soaps, chlorines, fertilizers, insecticides, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, what would be treated, or could be treated, what kind of lab would this be? Because almost every lab requires some sort of chemical use, I'm in the healthcare profession, so I know this, even though it's not a medical or dental lab. I just think some of these things need to be addressed, and I know we don't know who the tenants are, but we've been down the road of there being a tannery there, and it is near a wetland, and I know this isn't a wetland-protected area, but these are just things that need to be considered before we decide to approve this type of industrial type, even though it's zoned light industrial. I know, again, the tenant is not something that you guys get to do, but I'd just like, would like to know with the yes, no, yes, no, can do it, can't do it conditional, if we could get a little more clarity on what kind of treatments they would do of products, or what kind of manufacturing they would do without using any of these things that manufacturers typically use. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I didn't even get my questions. Are there any other opponents? And, worse than I've lost. There we go. So, proponents, opponents, does anybody want to provide any further testimony before we return to the applicant? Then, we will ask the applicant to return for rebuttal.
Do you have any?
If you have any, and...
We don't really have much. As the lady, as the woman mentioned, we don't know which tenants are going to be here. We're keeping it open and flexible for future users, and they'll have to go through the tenant process through the city.
Each of the tenants would require a building permit, and would be open to staff review at that point, to make sure that they're in compliance with zoning and building requirements.
Okay. So, just in case you didn't hear, that's part of the building process, when they come in for a building permit for the build-out, the tenant build-out. Then, they would, at that time, have to go to our code to be in allowed use within the light industrial, which is already defined in our code.
That's exactly correct.
So, we can't change that. Did you, are you able to address the signs that were put on, I'm assuming there were signs put on the site itself?
That would be the planning department, and we put the sign in front of the subject property, which is the, on Century Boulevard, so that's the code requirement with respect to the notice, it's 1,000 feet of the subject property, property owners within 1,000 feet, and that's also the code requirement, and that's what we did on November 6th.
And it used to be 100 feet, but we changed it to, it was 100 feet forever, and we changed it to 1,000 feet.
And there's a whole list of people that were mailed notices, and we have copies of who it was mailed.
Who received notice.
It was also listed, notified in five locations, community areas, and also on the website.
Okay. And then, the last question that came up was their traffic and the trips, and there was a traffics, did the applicant do a traffic study? And that's part of our, that was part of our very comprehensive...
We did a cap analysis.
Yeah, not a traffic study.
Not a traffic study.
Not a full traffic study, but, gosh, I can't remember.
Traffic impact analysis?
No, they just did a cap survey, or cap...
Just a cap analysis.
And Bob can talk to that a little bit, too.
Well, we've got two items that she, the lady was talking about.
Lori.
Lori. One was relative to Walmart study, and how that impacts what the comparison between the two are. And we do have the Walmart, the results of the Walmart study, traffic study here, and comparing the two ADTs, which is the average daily traffic loading, Walmart had 8,070 versus a 1331. So, comparison is like a magnitude of eight or nine.
And that's the difference between general commercial-type zoning, commercial zoning and light industrial zoning?
Correct.
Okay, and that's how the manual calculates, in a general sense, industrial trips?
Trips, and when you take bypasses and internal trips, and stuff like peak hour. There's a lot of finagling that goes along with these analysis, to try and tie down how much is internal trips, how much of it is bypass trips, things like that, that the Walmart study took into account, and did a fairly thorough job of coming up with an accurate valuation of what the ADTs are and everything like that. We made sure of that. For the other one, for the cap analysis, it's slightly different in that they already did a traffic study on the site, and part of that is that got approved a long time ago. What they're doing right now is determining whether or not the development meets the conditions for the cap, which is the capacity allocation program, which determines whether or not there's a mitigation requirement going to be made against the development for impacts on Highway 99. That's slightly different. What we're looking at here is, the total ADT for the site is, a peak hour, peak PM hour, is 43 net trips per acre. If you apply that towards the total site, I think it came up with 1,756 trips at the peak P-hour. And if you look at this, the ADT is at 1,713. It's not even, it's not the, it's not the peak PM, that's the average daily trips at 1,713. So, there's quite a bit of room for this thing to still grow, and they maintain it. What we're looking at really at is where the new development came in, that is a part of the classification for the development. Now, when a tenant improvement comes in, we will again, check the tenant improvement to see that their numbers, you know, match and don't exceed the requirements, again, for the cap analysis. The site already has adopted traffic transportation plan for the site.
That was done when it was the entire phase?
That was when the whole thing is done. So, now, we're breaking it down, and we look at each site individually for the cap, but we also keep an eye on the totals, so that they don't exceed the 43 net trips per acre, which is the limit, both for the total transportation study and for the cap.
Is there not a time limit on the transportation study? I mean, it was done some time ago.
No, there's no time limit. In fact, it's fairly accurate. It doesn't take into account the Walmart site, but the Walmart site took into account that site, and the surrounding acre, area, to determine what the impacts were. And so, they had to deal with their impacts on Highway 99, which includes lane extensions and things like that. This one, the impact is so small that it doesn't make sense. We already have, we have one cap project left, which is the intersection of Twelton Sherwood Road and Highway 99. What we're looking at is just the application of some finances towards that project, which is going to be going on by, from the county. So, that's how we came up with it.
So, you're saying that their PMP trip allowance, and that's just for a very small period of time within the day, their allowance is 1,700, but in the entire day, they're having 1,700s? So, is that, is that what I heard you say?
Yeah, it's basically...
1,756 to 1,717.
Right. So, in the whole day, they're...
PPM is 43 net trips per acre, PPM.
And so, they're not close?
They're not close.
Okay. So, that answers that question.
A comment about her signage, you know, the letter of the ruling says, we put it in front of the location, which, I know we did that, but something we had maybe not considered is, when that location is not on a place that anybody pretty much drives, it is not really realistic to just put it there, and maybe we could make a note to make some adjustment to that going forward, because it should have been on Twelton Sherwood.
But how do you do that? You can't post a sign on someone else's property, can you?
This property extends all the way out.
Oh, it could have, could have done it on this one.
Yeah, it just seems like that would have been the more conscientious thing to have done. We did, you know, we followed what we needed to do, and probably didn't occur to us to put it anyplace else, but since nobody drives by it unless you work in those two buildings, seems to me that that would...
No, where?
But it's the whole site.
Well, not, not really.
Okay. So, any other questions for the applicant before we close the hearing? Because our next deliberation will be on meeting the design criteria.
So, during our deliberation, are we free then to consult with the, with them again? Or if we close this now, we can't ask them no additional questions?
Correct. If we close it now, and we don't, if we have questions regarding it, we would have to reopen the hearing.
Okay.
So, I do have one question.
Then, let's get those out of the way.
On truck traffic, what's the intended route the trucks will be taking? Then, Century Drive onto Twelton Sherwood, or is it going to be through Century Drive to Langer Farms Parkway?
Hold on one second, I'm sorry. Traffic report right here. Okay. I mean, the existing two buildings up, as of today, that the Century Boulevard heading up towards the Walmart parcel is closed off, so they're all going currently out straight to Twelton Sherwood.
Right, but that's because the other part's not open.
Yeah, once it's, once it's open, then...
With that roundabout, I can't imagine they're going to do a lot of truck traffic out that way.
I would think so, I'd hope not.
I would think not. I would think that would not be their preferred route.
Yeah, but, Bill, it goes through the roundabout.
Our traffic study shows that 45% would be to and from the east onto Twelton Sherwood Road, 15% to and from the west on Roy Rogers, 20% to and from the north on Highway 99, 10% to and from the south on Highway 99, and then 10% to locations of the city of Sherwood south of Highway 99.
So, 10% potentially going to, because everything else is going to go out Twelton Sherwood Road.
You'd think, I mean, they could technically take a right and go out that way, but it would be...
Yeah.
Okay.
Because there's not a light at Twelton Sherwood and Century, making that left turn and stuff.
That's true. Yeah, that's...
But really...
Has there been any sort of conversation about putting a light, or anything like that, on that, coming out, if they're going to try and take a left to get to 99?
We would have to defer to Bob, and, but no, our knowledge there has not been.
It's not part of our TSP requirement. The only one was, that was identified, was the Adams Avenue intersection.
Which would lead them possibly to, be more likely to go out Adams, or go out to Langer Parkway?
If they want to take a left-hand turn onto Twelton Sherwood Road, but it's, it's a collector's status road, Adams Avenue is collector's status, so is Century Drive, so you'd be going collector to collector.
Which would be doable.
Appropriate for truck traffic.
And appropriate, yeah.
That's appropriate, yes.
So, in answer to Mike's question, is probably more than we would have anticipated, if you had said that 49% is going to, you had Roy Rogers and anybody going to 99, more than half of that is going to be used going a left out of there.
Heading west.
Heading, you go to 99 or Roy Rogers, based on the numbers you just gave us, which I don't know, is something we can do anything about anyway, but, is a thought. Can you put the slide back up that had our six and our eight things on it?
If I, if I may, keep in mind that the total counts is all traffic, so that's automobiles, that's the employees and visitors, where the truck, truck traffic really is going to be concentrated on heading down Twelton Sherwood Road to I-5. There's not a lot of stuff that they would be accessing in the other direction.
So, I believe we have, of the six here, we have two that you, five and six, right?
Correct.
That we qualify for, or that, I would really like to get us over there to four. So, what ones here are you moving, are you close to, that you would consider making some adjustments to? The window glazing we've discussed, that is probably, makes complete sense not to have that because of the base, the warehouse usage. The two different building materials, that would be, seems like something that may be...
So, Lisa, are you making, are you making the presumption then that we're, because they're asking us to consider this under 8B?
I understand that, but we can't speak with them again until when we're discussing this, so I'm asking them...
Ahead of time.
Ahead of time, I would be more likely to wish that you could stay under the six somehow, because that's why we did this whole thing. We spent a lot of time working this up to make this look a certain way, and of these, of these remaining four, the different building materials seems like something that might be, something that would be easily done, and possibly the, I don't know about the parking or the buildings from the street.
Yeah, they can't do three and four, and they're not interested in doing one. Yeah, they can't do three and four, and they're not interested in doing one. So they would be very hard.
They can't do three and four because of the way the buildings are oriented at this moment.
And wanting to meet the parking criteria, correct.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I, I mean, we and the owner would, you know, we, we would be willing to consider the options that way to, to help you allow us to make a, an approval or gain an approval. But ultimately, we would, we would have to consider the options because the, the, really the options are a major impact to the, the functionality of the building or the site. And so it's just tough.
Right. And it just is trying to make it less subjective, more objective is why we have that whole set of criteria.
Understood.
So then you get into the subjective part, which makes it more difficult to stand behind what we've, you know...
And the subjective part, again, would have been an outline from you showing how you met the seven criteria. And there are two criteria that are spelled out and the other ones that are not, which would put the...
Onus on us to figure it out.
To figure out how you intended to meet the criteria and...
I'm sorry, which, we, all seven are addressed in, in the type for site plan review narrative included in the application.
Oh, I'm looking at the memo again. I got...
So yeah, all of the criteria are addressed in, in the narrative for 8B.
Okay. I was reading the memo.
Just for clarification, the, it, it's the grade of the property that's kind of creating some issues in terms of orientation and parking and glazing.
Well, the glazing not so much.
One of the significant features that guides a lot of that, yes.
Right, okay. Yeah, that's, that's what I thought I understood.
Tell me where in your narrative you've got the seven, please.
Hey Jay.
Hey Jay, thank you.
Starting at the top, it says response, because the development cannot meet four of the six above listed.
Okay.
Okay, so, before we close the public hearing, would you allow us a 10-minute recess? And then we can hold questions for you after our 10-minute recess to make sure we understand the seven criteria and how they're going to be met? And then we'll, we'll ask the questions after...
That we might have, yeah.
Because we don't want...
Certainly. Yes, certainly.
Okay, so we will go ahead and take a 10-minute recess.
Thank you.
Coming back from our recess, during the break, I asked, just, whoops, turn on my microphone, just, did, we have to re-ask, was there any expedited contact or contact with the applicant by any of the members of the commission? No. I did have a conversation with staff regarding the outdoor storage. I had a question about what that meant, and they just explained that the outdoor storage that's addressed in the application is related to the permitted uses on the site and that if, and non-permitted use, a conditional use came in, then another application process would come in for conditioned outdoor storage. So as the application stands right now, we're presuming permitted uses, and so the outdoor storage is a non-issue, but I did ask staff and I did need to disclose that that's, that came up during the break. So, commission has an opportunity to reread those seven criteria. Are there any questions directly for the applicant regarding those criteria and the meeting?
Actually, Commissioner Simpson, I, it looks like we have some time. Could I, could we kind of go through these one by one and we could maybe add some, some depth and some description to each one?
Absolutely.
You've got 14 minutes.
Yeah, that is your rebuttal time.
Okay, super. So as far as provide, the first one is providing high-value industrial projects that result in benefits to the community, consumers and developers. As we've stated, we think this is a high-value tilt-up concrete building. It's not metal. It looks, what we feel, looks really good, and we feel, you know, it's a, phase one is completely leased out, which I think is a testament for the demand that's out there and the quality of the product.
Ultimately, I'll add that, you know, the, the tilt-up concrete is a much more durable, more attractive material than metal might be, or, or some other lighter industrial material that way for, for this type of building because of the abuse, the type, type of use that it's going to endure.
Number two is provide diversified and innovative working environments. And this is something that I know, I had a conversation with Michelle about it, and it is hard because there aren't any tenants right now, but providing flexible space as the Sherwood Economic Development Strategy completed by Cogan's Owens, Cogan and OTAC in, in 2006, mentioned that smaller industrial businesses typically locate in business parks or flex buildings, which can be utilized for a wide variety of uses, ranging from light manufacturing, recreational businesses, specialty contractors, technical services, and even limited offices. Thus, the most important factor to preparing land for Sherwood's future development is to target not a specific industry, but the flexible, flexible land and buildings where a variety of employers could locate. And, and they go on to mention that these flex buildings can include anywhere from two to 10 or more individual businesses. The startups typically don't have the capital or desire to build their own buildings, and the flexibility allows a tenant to perform a wide variety of activities and allows a landlord the ability to subdivide a larger building into, into different spaces.
Really, we've taken care to design the buildings, like I said, with flexibility and the industrial user in mind, where we've got a, a nice office entry, we've got the, the industrial or, or distribution aspect of it separated from that so that traffic is, is separated out and, and you don't have those conflicts. The building is configured with Big Bay column spacing, so we got 50-foot column spacing, which allows a lot of flexibility in between. You don't have columns in the way. We've got good dock door access so that different types of businesses can move their, their product in and out. We've got grade door access in case a business has a will-call act, type activity that's necessary to each one of those spaces.
I'll take up all my time here. Sorry. Thank you, but thank you. The, number three is support the city's goals of economic development. Historically, Sherwood has been known as a bedroom community. It's a great place to live, but there's not as many jobs as houses here. And I'm not sure if that's still the current state of things, but the Sherwood Urban Renewal Policy Advisory Committee identified Sherwood as a bedroom community, and I can't remember what year that, that document is from. And, you know, this project, fully leased, will provide additional jobs in the city. We feel like that is a benefit. Number four is complement and enhance projects previously developed under the industrial design standards. Well, this is a difficult one because there haven't been any. Number five, enhance the appearance of industrial developments visible from arterials and collectors, particularly those considered entrances to Sherwood, including but not limited to Highway 99, 12th and Sherwood Road and Oregon Street. Again, we believe that, that the layout and the, and the siding of these buildings with their short side towards Century Drive looks good and reduces that bulk. I don't want to jump ahead, that's the next one. But, you know, Century Drive has that 10-foot wide visual corridor with increased landscaping, and we feel like we've met this criteria. Do you have anything to add on there? Sorry.
No.
Number six is reduce the bulk appearance of large industrial buildings as viewed from the public street by applying exterior features such as architectural articulation, windows and landscaping. And again, this is where the orientation with a short side toward the street, our visual corridor, our landscaping, I think does reduce that bulk. And I know you want some closer to the street, but in this case, I think a little separation from the street i- isn't, isn't the worst thing. I think it's, you know, more visually pleasing in this case to have something a little bit further back.
Again, the, the separation is really important for the ability to get enough parking on site, and then the, the separation of the, the light industrial from the pedestrian is part, part of the proposal.
And number seven is protect natural resources and encourage integration of natural resources into design, including access to natural resources and open space amenities by the employees of the site and the community as a whole. Again, phase one was right next to Rock Creek and the associated wetlands, and we worked with the city and the Division of State Lands for permitting. Phase two is completely out of the natural resource area. We feel like this, this is a, a pretty easy one that we've met on this site. I know that one of the conditions is, and I think we either executed during last phase or this phase, is a, a corridor, a trail, pedestrian trail through the wetland area, and we're, you know, we're excited to have that as this criterion states for the employees and, and for the, the city at large.
So you stated that phase one is fronted on 12th and Sherwood Road, but there, is there not another phase between phase one and 12th and Sherwood Road?
There is, there is.
Sorry, it's...
Phase four.
According to the map we have, there's phase four that will be in between the two. And so...
Correct.
I guess what I'm hearing from the other commissioners is, and what you stated specifically was, this is the first real vetting out of a planning commission review and the design criteria. And most specifically, since we're setting a precedent on this particular two buildings, and it would be applied potentially in a same manner on the 12th and Sherwood Road, which is our gateway community, there are architectural features and opportunities that an architect could put on the building that would break it up and make it more pedestrian scale. And we had that opportunity when we did our community center to have the architects look at the building and say, you know, there's, there is great opportunity for, like you said, those little pop-outs and shadows and stuff, and it's very hard to see that on these tilt-ups, that there's, there's nothing more than a, a large wall facing, like you said, there's 6% or something like that of glazing. Are, I'm sorry, you, you stopped and I jumped right in.
I think that was...
Got through all seven of them before I interrupted.
No, that was my only comment as well is that, you know, what presidents are we, are we setting up, particularly start looking at 12th and Sherwood for the next phase, or whatever phase that's going to be on 12th and Sherwood, how do we want that to really present to the community?
There's five phases, is that correct?
I think the, initially, we were looking at a possibility of five total phases. I'm not sure if that's still the current plan.
That's what the paperwork, that's, I believe what it says in the narrative is that it's the second of five phases, but this, I believe here has only four phases shown on it.
Yeah, the map only has four.
Do you have any...
Plan's in back there.
Do you know what's happening with phase five? Is it bad?
We've got a stumper.
This may be two phases or one big phase.
Phase three might be. What, what's showing here is the big, the biggest area?
Yeah.
Might be one.
There's room for two buildings up there. It could be built up. Phase three, one more in phase.
They've identified that as phase three on the, on this thing here, and you're saying it could turn into phase three and five?
Correct.
Okay. And that does not front 12th and Sherwood because there's some other buildings in front of it? Okay. End of my questions.
Anybody else have any questions or concerns that they want the applicant to hear before we close the hearing? Okay, then we will close...
I will, I was just going to say, I think it's important to kind of look at each, each phase maybe under its own merit. I understand that a precedent may be set here tonight, perhaps for each phase or each project, even though they are connected, depending on, as we said, what, what road it fronts on and, and perhaps the architectural feel and pedestrian feel you're looking for on each phase. That could be adjusted for, for each site.
Or the applicant could consider asking for a continuance to reconsider architectural features.
We'll ask for the continuance to reconsider. We want to make sure that this is, is good for the community as well, as well as our client, so, if, if we might.
So I'm pleading in with my eyes at the staff to see how best we could facilitate this. We have a very, very busy schedule coming up, and I know that we want this project to be right, and we want to make sure it's the best for the community and workable for you within our community, because you're right, there are some opportunities for jobs here, but we would like the, since we can't go through the standard cookie cutter design standards that make it objective and we need to be subjective, we want to do it right. And it's the holiday season and we have already multiple hearings scheduled. And so what is a reasonable timeframe for you to want an, an extension continuance to? Or does the staff have a specific...
I was going to say, we do have a, a very busy schedule, and I guess it would be kind of up to the applicant. Two things that I'm thinking, if you're just dressing up the buildings and if that's what the proposal is, I think it's fine with continuing it to a date certain, and we can look at the schedule and identify one of those dates. If you're talking about relocating buildings or parking to the side or rear, I think that that warrants further analysis by the fire district. The public has seen the site plan. I mean, it's, it's a major shift in what the site would look like, and I think it warrants somewhat of a second look by the public and agencies to make sure that all of their standards would still be fulfilled. So it's up to the applicant. I don't know what, you know, we've had discussions with them. I, it's entirely up to them to decide how hard a look they want to look at, just, if they're just looking at the design of the buildings or if they're looking at moving the buildings. Then that's going to, I think, dictate the amount of time that I think we would want to ask for. And we would also ask that in your continuance that you had told 120 days for the period that you're going to be asking for.
So reasonable, if, if it's the small adjustment to the exterior appearance to the, to the street frontage, you're talking two to four weeks?
Correct. I, I think we have, December 10th and 18th, our agendas are full. Certainly, if it's minor, if you guys are comfortable with minor adjustments to it and provide them with some sort of direction and you feel like you could wrap it up very shortly, then I suspect that you could ask for them to come back to one of those dates certain. The next, I think, in January is January 14th?
Yes.
Is our first hearing in January. And again, it's certainly kind of up to the applicant to decide how they want to respond to your concerns.
And, and whether they're going to be addressing the industrial design, the objective standards or more the subjective standards that would require a hearing and how much analysis would need to be done by the planning commission as well. So that direction would be helpful to, to know the timing.
If I, I may, you know, request some greater directive from the commission in terms of, you know, what, what...
What we would be looking for in a...
What are you looking for? It's like...
Right, we haven't even discussed it yet.
We have not. But if we close the public hearing, how would the process be to continue it? If we go into deliberation?
You could go through deliberations and choose to reopen the public hearing.
Okay. Tonight and, and continue it to a date certain, so that people here that testified would know which way we're going, so...
Correct.
We will go into deliberation amongst ourselves, provide some sort of direction, and then seek some guidelines for dates for the continuation. So at this time, we'll close the public hearing and then as a commission...
Deliberate.
Deliberate.
Great.
So...
Looking at one through seven.
Looking at one through seven, yes.
So does anybody have any thoughts right off the top of their...
Right off the top of, top of my head, I like the project.
As it sits?
As it sits, I don't think you can move the buildings in a different...
Agree.
No.
Yeah. I think it's more of, I, how do you make it look like eye candy?
How can you make it look nicer?
So, so that we can set a precedence for what's going to happen in, you know, phase three and phase four and other areas of the community.
And I, I would like to address that. I think that when we talk about setting a precedent, I think just considering subjective criteria is setting a precedent.
Yeah.
You know, it's, this is a, two buildings, they're, the, the short end faces the street, they're at the back, the very back of the development. When those buildings up next to 12th and Sherwood Road come up front, that's going to be a whole different thing, and probably maybe even another subjective, you know, hearing. So my own, my own personal opinion at the moment is, I don't, I really have a lot of problems... problems with this current project, you know, because I think it would just be ridiculous to impose 15% glazing on the side that faces, because-
Completely.
Right, doesn't make sense.
They'd have to just put a wall on the other side of the window, so, so that doesn't make any sense. And the building's location is kind of set the way it is. I wouldn't mind seeing, you know, the landscapes, landscaping really beefed up, you know, nothing like a very beautiful entrance to the little, to the, to the buildings back there, to make up for the fact that we're looking at, you know, that wall.
Flat building, exactly.
Yeah, that building.
Screening it.
And, and we also have to think about, we're gonna get a lot of traffic down that road. I mean, even though the gateway is Twelton Sherwood Road, people are gonna potentially take a left turn and go the back way to the shopping center instead of going and then take a left at the light. So we want whatever is gonna be on that road to look nice.
Exactly.
So there are seven criteria. Does anybody have any comments not related to the number six, reduce the bulk appearance from the street, and enhance, number five, enhancing the appearance of the industrial developments? It's very hard to complement and enhance previous projects. It's very similar to what's already there, but we did not have design criteria in place at that one.
Right.
So we can't gauge that one, but this will be the gauge for the next one.
Right, so six and, five and six are the only ones that are really-
Well, and seven is, seven is kind of-
That's natural resources integrated in the site. I think they have-
They did that.
They think they've done that.
I agree.
I think they've done that, and I think they, with their arguments, have, have complied with one through four. So-
Right, I think five, you know, six and seven are, or five and six are the only ones that I have any sort of question on in terms of making it look better. I agree with Russell in that it's going to be a, there'll be more traffic on that road-
Yeah.
Than just the people that are working there.
Than just industrial light traffic. It'll be people going through, as a collector.
Yeah.
Because I'm living in Old Town, if I go the back way and take Langer Farms Parkway, I might take a right down on Century and go all the way out. And that's, if that's a shortcut for me to get to Walton Sherwood Road-
Yep.
Instead of going straight down to the light, I'll probably use that a lot. So I think a lot of citizens will be using that road.
And then when the next phase develops, it'll be right on Twelton Sherwood Road-
Right.
It provides us an opportunity to-
And while it won't match what's already there, these, if we don't do this phase, the other ones won't match either. I mean, you could make it so that Phase One is what it is, and then Phase Two through Five match each other better. And I'm not saying completely change it, but just add some additional features, maybe as additional landscaping too, but some additional building material, some brick, something to make it look more pleasing aesthetically from the street. That's what I'd like to see.
Even like what they've done before with different elevate, you know, not elevation, articulations, so that, you know-
Yeah.
I know architects have fancy words that they use when they make the bump outs on the building, and that's what we use-
More interest.
More, more interest when it's going by instead of the blank walls that we have in other areas.
Which is what they did in the community center, right?
So.
So that's the direction I would like to see if-
That is the direction, planning commission is going towards, is that-
Yeah, I think we're kind of in agreement with that.
Okay, and so there won't be any other surprises or changes based on this?
And you know, and I, and I, my own, again, my own thought is that, you know, just on that side that faces the road.
Yeah, not the whole building, just-
Not the whole building, just on the-
The frontage.
Yeah.
Street frontage.
Yeah, okay, so I seek to staff's direction on how, do I reopen and ask the applicant to-
You reopen and ask the applicant to respond to deliberation.
And then proponents and opposites.
Correct.
Okay.
Or, or the other thing that you could do is you could reopen it, ask the applicant to come up and speak to what they've heard as regarding a continuance, provide, come back and present it to you, and then give the opportunity, just leave the record open, the public hearing open, and give the public an opportunity to respond at that time, which is probably more appropriate.
More effective, because yeah, they'll, they'll have a-
They'll know what's going on.
They'll have something to look at. So we will reopen the public hearing, ask the applicant to come forward based on the discussion of the planning commission, and see if they are willing to do a continuation for a date specific and told 120 days.
We would be willing to, to do that continuance and to modify the 120 day period. We appreciate your deliberations and the comments that you, you brought up, and feel like we can go back and, you know, relook at the north elevation, the street side elevation, and, and work with staff to, to refine that and come up with a mutually agreeable solution.
So the hearing on January 14th is however many, 59?
Fifty-nine days from today.
Fifty-nine days, so that we would continue, if we have a motion, I, we would continue the hearing to January 14th, with the applicant's understanding that we would be tolling the 120 days by 59 days, and at the continued hearing, it would be reopened for any further applicant testimony, proponents or opponents, full public testimony at that time.
I make a motion that we continue the public hearing, SB 1303 Sherwood Industrial Park, Phase Two, to, what was the date, January?
Fourteenth.
January 14th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Okay, we are continued to January 14th. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your consideration.
All right. While they clean up, we will take 30 seconds to get rid of one set of paperwork to go to the next set of paperwork.
Thanks. This is, here it is at nine o'clock again. I need to use my crock pot more. You're involved.
All right.
I'll miss you. I told the way to the big seat. Get hurt. You could have-
Just a minute, this is all right, just a few years on here.
You just had dental care.
Forgot the beginning. See, all right, we are ready now for public hearing CUP 1302 and MLP 1303 Old Town House, Old Town Town Homes. Now, do I need to reread the public hearing disclosure? Okay. The public hearing on CUP 1302 and MLP 1303 Old Town Town Homes is called to order. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff report, 15 minutes, questions if anybody, the hearing body. Open public hearing for testimony. Applicants will have 30 minutes, split between presentation and rebuttal. Then persons in favor of the application, four minutes. Persons opposed to the application, four minutes. Rebuttal from the applicant with the remainder of their 30 minutes. We'll close the public hearing. No other comments will be heard from the public or the applicant. Final comments from the staff, questions of staff if any by the commission, and discussion by the commission. A decision may be made by the planning commission at the close of the hearing, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain. If the matter is continued to a date certain, this will be the only notice of that date you receive. If you wish to speak, please fill out one of the testimony forms and submit it to the planning commission secretary. The chair will recognize those persons wishing to speak, and any questions should be addressed through them. When you come forward, please state your name for the record and your address if you wish to receive written notice. In deciding whether to approve or deny the application, the commission must consider whether the application meets the relevant approval criteria found in the city's land use regulations. Those criteria are identified in the staff report and are available in the room this evening. The oral and written testimony must be directed toward these criteria or other criteria the person speaking believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue with enough detail to enable the commission, the applicant, and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes an appeal to the city council or land use board of appeals based on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the commission to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. At this time, I would like to ask members of the commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest, indicate the nature, and indicate whether you intend to participate. There are none.
Well, I've, I've checked out the site.
Visit the site.
We visited the site. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge any planning commissioners, member, member, planning commission members' ability to participate? Planning department will now present the staff report.
Michelle? We're here tonight for the Old Town Town Homes. It's a conditional use permit request as well as a minor land partition. So to give you a little idea, you might remember this site from last month when we, planning commission approved the Old Town design for a single family home on this same lot. It has the same tax lot, but it has, it's the other half of that. It's approximately 5,000 square feet. The applicants proposed for this side of the lot, zoned retail commercial, a two lot partition with the construction of two attached townhomes in the retail commercial zone, which brings us to the conditionally permit application because it is in the Old Town overlay. And you can see the site is located right here, outlined in red. The Old Town Town Homes have the site plan. It's a two lot partition. Each lot is approximately 2,508 divided right down the middle with garage access, will be in the alley. The frontage improvements include street trees, a sidewalk that's approximately five feet wide. Engineering department has requested curb and gutter, quarter street improvement, so to speak. The curb as well as the gutter are degraded and are shown some wear. The engineering department staff has requested a public utility easement as well as a streetlight in the middle of the site, mid-block streetlight, storm cleanout with manhole. Next, you'll be looking at the Old Town overlay design standards. The applicants provided this elevation with the different colors as well as materials to address the residential industrial, I mean, Old Town overlay design standards, looking at the volume and mass of the site, breaking that up well, as well as the roof form and the pitches, the permitted size on the main buildings. The different materials with the siding and exterior cladding are also part of your review process, looking at the trim and the architectural detail. You can see a lot of different articulations going on with this, with this, with these townhomes, as well as openings, plenty of windows on either side, as well as in the front with the entranceway. We have porch and entrances clearly defined on the, on the front of the building as well as landscaping and fencing. There are no additions with this project, and it clearly shows a front-facing presentation. So with that, staff is, whoops, sorry, with that, staff's recommending approval with the recommended conditions. I do have one error on the staff report, the last condition, or, on the last page under the conditions, it should read prior to, prior to, what did we say? It should be prior to final occupancy, the applicant shall, shall complete the public improvements and accepted by the engineer. Prior to final occupancy rather than prior to addition, so the-
Page 38 of 38.
Thirty, thirty, 37 of 38 actually, under D, number one, it should move to prior to final occupancy, F, and we'll number that F2.
So this will be F2.
Could you go over that, I, I was looking for it, could you go over that again?
D2 goes to-
D1.
D1 goes to F2.
D1 goes to F2.
As, as far as the timing of that?
Where's page 38?
Yeah, there's no page 38.
I just wanted to know what an A, full depth AC is.
Full depth AC basically is they're cutting out the whole AC segment.
What's an AC?
So it's about asphalt, concrete, pavement.
That's the answer to my questions. Asphalt and concrete.
Yeah.
Phew, that was the only, that was the only concern I had about the entire applicant, applications, so, I think I've passed that, I'm good to go. All right. All right, so the applicant can now come forward. I don't have a card, so I don't know who's-
It's Larry Wright from CNL Properties, as well as his project manager, Tom Burnett.
Wonderful, thank you.
And we just asked that, they fill out a blue card before you leave so we can, for the record.
Oh, okay.
Up, Tom.
Tom is not a project manager, he is one of the, he's my partner, so we're together. That's fine, yeah. Again, my name is Larry Wright, and I, we just moved to Sherwood. We were living in Metzger. We're renting a house right now, and it's at 20743 Southwest Santa Fe Terrace in, in the Oregon Trail subdivision. So we are a small builder, as you can see from the, if you've been by the site, we are under construction on the single family, and I think it's gonna be a wonderful addition to the Old Town, and I think will fit in just perfectly along with the, the two townhomes that we are projecting. I do have some concerns on the conditions that are put on us, and I'd like to, you know, I have some, a copy if, if you want to take it around. Yes, there is a copy for each one, yes.
Thank you.
This is, the, the piece of paper that I gave you is the, is the pre-app meeting that we had, that we felt that we, we went the right way in, and that we paid for, and we, and we asked the city to give us the, some, the, the guidelines of what, what we are supposed to be doing for this, for this project. And in doing this, we, this is before we bought the property, this is our due diligence, and this is when we went to the city. And as you can see from, from the pre-app meeting, this gives you the existing conditions of the, of the, what is at the project right, at that time. And as you see down there where it says the cities, the city, the street selection, it's down where it says curb line is moderate condition, and the AC pavement is in moderate condition. And moderate to me means it's, it's adequate, it's, 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 it's okay, it's, it's average. And in other jurisdictions that we've been in, we, to get a partition, there is three elements that need to be done, which is a paved street, a curb, and, and also sidewalks, which we are putting sidewalks in front of the house. And since these are adequate, we do, we feel that the, the project is, at this point, we don't need to replace these things. I, I know Bob has his own feelings on it, and, and so we did discuss it earlier today. But we, but when we made this, when we went into this project, we bought the property based on what we thought the improvements would be. And so we, we projected about $15,000 in improvements. It's over $50,000 right now, if everything is, is to be met. And the biggest concern we have, believe it or not, Bob, is, is the lighting, in that when we're trying to sell houses, people don't like a street- when we're trying to sell houses, people don't like a streetlight in their, in their bedrooms, and especially when you're modifying the, the motorhomes and the, and the cars across the street and Andy's, and we're, you know, we're modifying those. So we are, you know, these are just some of the conditions, you know, we are very concerned about these. And, and also, if you think about it, in Old Town right now, you have very few vacant lots. So where is the additional income or, or money coming for the other improvements of these streets that you are requiring us to do? So we have a new development in the, in the center of a block that has all new pavement, new gutters and everything, all the new up and standing conditions, and the rest of the, the rest of the Old Town besides the core area, which was developed with urban renewal money, which we don't have. We're doing this out of our own pocket. So this, that's the concerns that we have. And so what in, what in the future are you, how are you going to get, if someone comes to you and they want to refurbish a house, or they get permits to do a, a redevelopment or, or remodeling, are you going to require these people to improve the front of their house in the street? I mean, that, that's the only way that I know that you guys are going to be able to get the money to do the improvements other than taxing. So that's, that's our concern. And, you know, I'm not, you know, we just have the concern, that's all. We love, we love it here. As a matter of fact, the people in this, in the city have been very helpful to us. Michelle, and Brad, and, and Patty, and Karen, and everybody's been very helpful. So we've been, had, we've had a good, and Ethan Bob. So at that, I'm done.
So I'm just looking at the conditions that, so you gave us this, but there's in our code the conditions of approval on the staff report.
Right.
It's C1A, which is install curb and gutter, C1AI, which is the full-depth AC.
That's what I'm saying right now, is that in our, in our original pre-app meeting, these conditions weren't brought up. But in, in, in the future, and, and that, you know, we were told that we were going to be, we'd have to be doing these. So that's, that's my, that's what I was getting at.
Right. And then C1E is the install street lighting based on standards?
Mm-hmm.
And, and you're okay with the other ones about the manhole cover and the catch basin and?
Well, the catch basin goes right along with the AC. If you're going to, if you're going to do the curb and gutter, you would do the, you do the, the catch basin at the same time.
And the storm.
And the storm, and the storm, I think, is already done, isn't it, Bob? I think.
E-I.
The storm manhole has already been done.
It's been done.
Yeah. Right.
The what it was?
The manhole installation by.
The storm, the storm water.
Was done with the, with the first phase, your building, right?
So regardless, staff should remove EI, which is, replace storm cleanout with manhole? Or it's very confusing. It's C1, and then there's an A, and then an I, and then a B, C, D, E, I, F.
The I should be, have been, like, that should have been tabbed in.
Yeah, it should be tabbed in. It's an E, like, sub, sub E.
Yeah.
Is, is that a true statement that we should remove, regardless of where the conversation goes now?
EI should be removed.
EI should be removed because the manhole has already been installed. Is that what we're saying? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, so the manhole cleanout, that one's been resolved. And so you're, you're requesting that these conditions not be applied or modified?
Right, or modify, yeah.
So A, A completely, AI as well. So the, the entire thing for A, right?
Correct.
Needs to be, you must have gone. B and C are fine.
Yep.
And D is fine.
Yep.
E is the other one he doesn't like. Right? The streetlight.
Right. And what's, was F part of the previous application, which is the catch basin? What is?
The way this worked is that we identified items that would be affected by both lots. Instead of breaking this down into two separate projects, because it would be more cost-effective to do them all at once, the conditions basically roll from one project, which was the residential building, into this project.
Okay.
So the conditions are basically, we wanted to make sure that the conditions were captured for both items.
So they can stay there because they're, that doesn't help us do them?
Yeah, they're, it may be redundant to the first one, it may not be acceptable in that way.
Okay, so.
But the intent was to set it up so that the conditions applied to both lots, whether he did the condos first or the residential home first.
But I don't recall, sorry, I don't recall the, the curb gutter streets.
And the AC. Yeah, so you're saying that A was in the other one too, and we?
Yeah. The conditions were the same, as far as I know of. All I did was change the date on the thing. I didn't really change it to, to reflect anything because of the fact that when we were looking at this, he didn't know whether he was going to do the condos first when we were discussing it, or the residential first. When he went to the residential first, we said, great, there, the conditions.
Applied to both.
Apply to both, and we're giving him the option of either doing it now or doing it later. But to break them up separately to the impact area directly in front of the lot is just a excessive cost for construction because it's double the moab, dub every, you know, he's just got to deal with it. And it just didn't make that, that type of sense.
Okay.
So that was in the previous, as far as your concern to you, that was there previously when we were doing the last, last month when we were looking at it, and you didn't have it, and you didn't say anything about it.
No, I did, I didn't know about it until the night of the meeting. So that's, you know, the night of the planning meeting. Michelle sent it to me an email, and I didn't, I didn't pick up on it, so, and so I didn't, you know, I just saw it the night of the, of the planning meeting, so I didn't have, you know.
Oh, so how that's going to work, because those are already part of the condition of the previous approved application. We can't change that, so those are already in there.
Yeah. How's that work?
So. I don't see any other people in the room to testify, so, well, did you want to testify before we? I know she is, but.
That was, they weren't there before. I believe they get sprung on.
You know, they were on the, they were on the, they were on the original for the single-family.
You're saying that they were there?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that was part of what was approved this, back in October.
Okay, so.
It's tough. Okay.
Yeah, that's a tough one.
So anything else, so what does, everything else is good, is fine for you, the conditions? Okay.
Okay. So we can, I can, I have to ask for proponents, opponents, and rebuttal, so.
I don't think anybody's here.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so, okay, so we will, so we have to have, if you guys, you have 30 minutes, so she would like to speak as part of the applicant time, or?
Candy Wright, CNL Properties.
So you have to come up for the record.
We're being recorded on television.
You'll be on tele, television, so.
Okay, I'm Candy Wright, CNL Properties. I just want to say I'm also a real estate agent, and so my job is to sell these properties. And I have to tell you, people don't want a streetlight in their window. In Oregon Trail where we live right now, we have like, oh, four houses before there's a streetlight. Maybe you've changed it since Oregon Trail was built in the 60s, but this isn't a very long street for, for these, for this project. And there's streetlight on, on each end, and you want to put one in the middle? It's, they're going to be in somebody's bedroom window on, on the townhomes, and they're not going to be a pretty color because that's not what's, you know, environmentally friendly now. And lighting up Andy's parking lot is really not cool. So that's really all I have to say. It's not reasonable to do that. It might be part of your code requirements somewhere, but it's just not reasonable. And you have to not be tunnel vision with your code requirements. You've got to think about what people want. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Any, anything else on your time? All right, then we will close the public testimony. And do you have any, staff have any response to the applicant's concerns?
Yeah, I think that Bob would be the best person. He's come up with those recommendations and is following the standards in engineering.
Right. Let's start off with the pre-application process. Pre-application process is not a definitive process of all the items that are to be obtained through the review process for conditions. Pre-application process, main goal, number one, is to talk about what the process is for going through the planning approval process and design review. We try to capture stuff as best we can, but we don't do an in-depth study, as it were, to come up with a final solution. There's a lot of stuff that is, that is missing in that. We try to capture it, but not everything's done. Again, cursory review of the items, curb lines, AC, that, when we get the final idea of what he's going to be doing with the property coming in, then we go out and actually walk it, and then take a good, close look at it. When I say in moderate condition, moderate doesn't necessarily mean that it's even close to acceptable as far as design life. Curb lines that have been built in the 1950s, you're talking concrete with a 75-year lifespan, it's starting to, you know, reach the point where it's starting to basically fall apart a little bit. You get surface flaking and things like that. Still a curb line, still acts like a gutter, but it's starting to fall apart. Our standards are, if it doesn't have at least a 25-year lifespan to it, or, or, you know, 20-year lifespan to it, we start looking at it a little bit differently and say, okay, does it, you know, can it still function? He's going to be cutting out the curb line to replace the storm line, or the storm catch basin sump. That's going to already get him out into the pavement section as it is. So the curb line is an extension thereof. We look at it, and we said, it's not quite up to par. It really isn't. It's not what we would require or allow with other people, and we asked for replacement. The pavement section, again, we're starting to look at it and saying, how much design life is left in this? How much is this really going to be worth? Can we do something as a minimal amount of effort to extend that life cycle so that it's, you know, appropriate? According to code, I could go clear up to the middle, the middle road and say, take it all out, put, give me a new surface. I think a grind and overlay is, meets that function. We have to tear out a little bit of the asphalt, full depth, to be able to allow construction of the curb line. That's just a given. But I think that what we're looking at is, given the type of development, is it proportional to what we're, what he's doing? What we're asking for proportional to the impact to the public improvements as far as upgrades? And we thought it was. The sidewalk was a, a no-brainer. The fact that we reduced the sidewalk width from our standard to meet more of what is going on in Old Town is, is a, is a part of our ability to try and work with him. Instead of a six-foot, he's getting a five-foot that, it's not meandering, but it, again, it's not the full six-foot that we would normally look at. Our standard for Old Town is a one-of, one-of curb, which is similar to the Old Town stuff down here. We're not asking to replace to that standard either. We're asking to try and match the existing stuff. I don't think that the one-of curb or the streets, concrete streets, will ever go down that far. So we're not really pushing the envelope here to ask for a minimal amount to keep the, the infrastructure leased up to an operable level that we feel comfortable asking for. Streetlights, we look at it from a safety standpoint. The streetlight for Pine and Second Street is across the street out by Bellevia. Doesn't, it, it lights up the intersection, but it doesn't reach mid-block. The other one is on Washington Street at Second, but it's also lighting up the intersection, not extending down to mid-block. Basically have a, a real blank area in there. Now, what type of streetlight are we going to apply in that thing? Our standards are, we update. That's the way we're going. Our current standard is trying to match what we're doing in Old Town. It's not the blue light, it's the black Shepherd's Crook. It matches Pine Street, matches Highland Drive, matches part of Columbia. That's our standard. That's what we're going to. The acorns are no longer going to be allowed. The Shepherd's Crook deflects the light down. We don't get as much uplighting, so we don't get as much light pollution. We understand that. We don't want that either. But we can't ignore having no streetlights when we have development that occurs. We have to take it into account. So unfortunately, it's a small development, but it does require us to look at it like anything else. And this is the minimum I think I could ask for. So I agree with him. I, I wholeheartedly agree with Larry coming up and voicing his opinion. I think that's great. I think it's important that you hear it. I think that you question it, and you question me about it the same way. How do I come about the rationale that I use for it and what I, what I put into it? And then make a decision on that. But I think what we've asked for really is the minimal that we're going to go for.
And so, and I can see that, because you're only doing a quarter-street improvement. And this is the actual, if he can, he can do the minimum allowed to make the curb and the gutter, what is that, the cleanout, work? That's what he's, what he needs to do. And as far as the light, how, that's, all of these conditions go to both of his properties that he's developing, correct?
It, the concept or the intent was that the conditions applied to both properties, but in lieu of having him split it up, because he wanted to bring the, the residential part in first as a separate lot, something tract, and do that one first, we said, it doesn't make sense to do that because, what, you're going to construct the, the frontage improvements in two parts? It wasn't cost-effective. So the intent was to say, it doesn't matter whether you do the condos first or the residential first, the conditions apply to both. Now, we might have gotten the process wrong and created a little kerfuffle there, but the intent is that he gets the ability to decide for himself when he wants to build them, either with the first one or the second one. Doesn't matter, just so long as by the time the occupancy is granted on the latest started construction, that the public improvements are completed.
Okay. And as far as the light goes, and they're lighting up the other side, is there any reciprocity to the people that are over there for the fact that they're not having to put the streetlight in?
The, the.
Or how does the fee program work for that?
I'm not sure about that. I really don't. The, the, the lighting standards, the, the, the spacing on the, the Shepherd's Crooks aren't quite where we'd get full coverage of a full street, you know, or, or at least a half-city block. It doesn't work that way. If you look at our, at our spacing on Pine Street or Columbia, they're, they're kind of close together.
I'm just saying that if the person on the other side of the street had developed first, they would put the light on their side.
Correct.
Is there, is fee in lieu of, or?
For a public improvement, they, there's nothing there that I could grab onto. The SDCs don't allow me to, there's nothing there for, for a street SDC for that, I don't.
It'll redevelop across the street, isn't it?
If it's redeveloped, like?
Oh, if it's redeveloped, but.
Or, I'm just saying.
Never happen.
Haven't gone through it before. So it's something new.
But it's something they can pursue through the process, potentially?
A fee in lieu for streetlights?
Or, I'm just saying, they're paying for the streetlight even though they're the only one side of it, and the other guy on the other side of the street isn't helping pay for it. I'm just trying to find any type of relief to, to hear the concern that the applicant's making.
I would see that as the same condition of him, of building a sidewalk from one side of his property, other side of the property. There's nothing over here, over here, but somebody else gets the benefit of it. I, I don't know.
Has the bad luck to be the one doing the building.
Just to start the, the process. I, the, I'm sort of at a loss with that one.
Can't think of a way to.
I was just going to say, I, I think you would have to have something set up if you were going to set a fee in lieu.
going to set a fee in lieu of. Certainly Bob can, as city engineer, look at modifying street sections, but, I mean, you're talking about Old Town, and, I mean, it's up to you guys.
And have a lighting program work.
It's up to the planning commission and city council, and ultimately, I mean, these are the standards that they put in place. And it is unfortunate, but that's how development occurs. Like, first end, you get dinged with the improvements. That's unfortunately the way it happens sometimes.
Okay.
This pre-application meeting you had, is there, is there a cost for this?
They do pay for it, yes.
It's $400. And they get notes from planning, engineering, building, if there's building plans available. Fire department shows up, public works, water and sewer show up. And typically, what we'll do is we'll discuss existing conditions, what's out there, potentially, what, from a planning perspective, what process they're going to go through, what criteria they need to respond to in their narrative, what are the application requirements. We do try and identify for them, because we know it's, we realize it's in due diligence. Generally, we won't make any blanket statements that this is going to be the requirements. We will say we're going to require some public improvements. And for that matter, when you develop property, you have to provide adequate water, sewer and service, adequate water, sewer and access. And although they're not proposing access to the road, they're fronting the road and they're coming back to the alley. So the question is, is it an approved roadway? And ultimately, I mean, that's Bob's call to decide whether or not it's an approved roadway. And he's saying that it's not. And to add to, Larry said it himself, I mean, if we don't get it through development, the city doesn't have a lot of money in its coffers to go out and do these projects unless we go back out to the tax base and expand the urban renewal agency or other mechanisms to fund those improvements.
But to the applicant's point, there, I can see how he might consider some of the notations on this sheet as being the way, the direction he can expect us to move regarding those improvements, so...
I don't disagree with you.
Does anybody else have any other questions of staff or comments for deliberation?
Well, I will say that in our first town, when we lived in Bethany, we had a light that was right outside our window, so it is important to me that we have a style that will minimize light pollution, because it was, you know, definitely something, we had blackout blinds and it ended up becoming kind of an issue. So it's good to hear that we're looking at standards to keep that in mind.
So you think the shepherd hooks do better than some? Is that what you're saying, shepherd?
Compared to the acorn lamps that we have right now, we're trying to phase those out. The intent is to phase those out completely and to go with a standard. And we, right now, we've selected the shepherd's hook as the standard that we're going to go with, because it does reduce the throw of the light in the upper reaches. It focuses it down. So we take care of the pedestrian corridor area and the street.
Okay. And also, you have to think of the number of children who walk that corridor as well. I mean, we have, I mean, I have a 10-year-old, and I know that he and his friends are aching to be that age where they get to walk around. And not having proper lighting in that area, and it's right, in an area where it is really dark right now, that's a big concern for, I think, a lot of parents within the community would feel that it needs to be lit up a little bit better than it is now. And we've got some schools that are really close by, and so you have a lot of kids who are walking that corridor.
I really appreciate Bob's effort to minimize the cost by doing quarter street and working with them as much as possible for this. But I think based on what our criteria is and what the code says we have to do, we don't have any flexibility. We've tried to grab at a couple straws and we don't have any other straws to grab at except the criteria that was presented before us in the staff report. So I would entertain a motion if someone is prepared to do that.
Russell did a great job a minute ago.
Unless you're sitting all by yourself.
That's why we put you down there.
That's why I'm down here. All right, I make a motion that we approve with, I don't have that in front of me, with all of the, thank you.
I can read it.
Let's see, that was the last one. We already did that one, didn't we? Here we go. Nope, we're not there yet. Now we're here. We need colored pieces of paper between our...
Oh.
There we go.
Yes, please.
That would be good.
Duly noted.
All right, I make a motion that we approve, is this CUP 1302?
That's correct.
Dash MLP 1303. With conditions directing, am I close? Approve the application with conditions adopting the staff report as presented.
And modified by staff.
And modified by staff. With modifications, yes.
A second?
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion passes.
Sorry about that.
But Larry, thank you for bringing that, this to our attention. I mean, I don't know what, I mean, when I see moderate, I do think one thing. I don't think, you know, if Larry had, if he had known that there's a 75-year limit on, you know, on concrete, and we're looking at like less than 20, you know, if he knew what that was, that might have made a difference. Maybe not, because this is a great city to build a townhouse in, but, I don't know. I just think maybe we should consider using different language, maybe more descriptive so it helps, so there aren't these kind of, you know, bottlenecks in the future.
I agree. And we'll probably, I know that I will probably be using a different sentence structure in presenting information, particularly to the applicant during pre-apps. Again, it wasn't intended to try and hide anything, but...
We're just trying to gouge a quarter street out of you. Just kidding.
Okay. All right. I just want to thank the mayor one more time for recognizing the work that the commission and the council have done over the last year. It's, you know, it's very nice to hear that what we have done is recognized by the council. Does anybody else have any other comments before we adjourn? All right, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.